Starting a webinar.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our March the ninth Strategic Planning Meeting. And I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a couple of Public Works items this afternoon that we're going to place in Public Works Committee to talk about them. One is our Stormwater Recidivism and then also Vegetation Ordinance. And I'm going to turn the chair over at this time to Councilman Mitchell to let him run these two items. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the first item we're going to look at is Stormwater Recidivism Ordinance. And this is, this is something that Councilman Henderson and myself have been working on to try to, we, I've heard the council and I've heard words like where, where, where's the teeth in the law? Where's the enforcement? So what we've done is we've, we've looked at that and we're trying to find a home for the steep slopes floodways ordinance. And this is, this will be part of it, this recidivism ordinance. And we have come to the conclusion that where we can have the most teeth and, 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 and there are enforcement tools or enforcement people to help us with this is with the Stormwater Regulations Board. And so what this ordinance does is it basically, and well, I'll tell you what, rather than me explaining it, why don't I turn it over to the attorney? And Phil, would you fill us in on, on what this does?
Yes, sir.
What this attempts to do?
What, what it attempts to do? Yes, sir. This is a procedure that we have, at least currently have in our city code regarding hearing procedures by the board and judicial review that may be available if a court is, wants to review a matter that has already been determined by the board. There is a procedure that is established in this ordinance that allows the board to make a ruling on matters after an opportunity for someone to be heard by that body. And the board can impose civil penalties in accordance with this, which are allowed under state law. And those civil penalties can be as high as $5,000 here in connection with this provision. Those civil penalties are subject to review by the court system in connection with this ordinance. And we have included provisions in this hearing procedure that if civil penalties are unpaid after a ruling has occurred by the board, they can be required to be paid before any additional stormwater permits would be issued for other land disturbance permits by the permit holder. That gives an opportunity for all parties to have a hearing, an opportunity for them to dispute that and to get into court if they choose that. It's not just some arbitrary action by an individual that might be giving a citation. There's a full chance for a hearing under the procedures here and for the courts to approve those civil penalties after that's happened. And we believe that this would be the best approach to be able to provide for people to at least abide by our regulations on stormwater here in the city.
Thank you. I, I, I guess I'd just like to add is, is, is when we're, we're, we're looking for ways to enforce and ways to make sure the actors are not being bad, they're being good actors. When they're, when we're dealing with, with things like steep slopes, stormwater floodways is, is a, we thought a quasi judicial board that would link right to the court system so that we can try to assure a due process to where people can feel, feel heard and where if they disagree with what's, what's been done or what's been decided, then they can take that to the court. And that, I, I think in summary, now I, you sent this out, Phil, I hope, I hope you've all had a chance to read it. It's about a two and a half page document. So if you have it, please do that. But, but I'll start with, are there any questions to what Mr. Noblet or I have said so far? Okay, we've got Councilperson Burns.
Yeah, thanks a lot. So I really like it, Jerry and Phil. I like it very much. And it, it relates to something I was saying earlier. Have you all gotten pretty much all the bugs out so that that could pertain to any important enforcement issues across the board?
We, we've had, Councilperson Henderson and myself have had conversations with different folks. I believe that the stormwater staff has signed off on it in, in Public Works. I've got a phone call into the acting chair of the board, David Hudson. I haven't had that returned yet, but obviously if we choose to go down this road, we're going to want them heavily active in, in the production of this legislation from start to wherever it may go. Remember after this, we're going to talk about the vegetation component. And of course, there's a phase one, phase two component, which maybe we can't get to in this term, but here's hoping that the next council will take this up and continue to progress it.
If I may follow up, I think it's a really, really important prototype. And I guess my question is, because of concerns I've had, could you still, could you also do that for enforcement of zoning? Use this prototype across the, the board?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Phil to jump in here in his opinion.
Unless you've got a review board looking at it to actually make that occur. And now it could be a, an issue that could go before the Board of Zoning Appeals potentially if you had that. But normally that is done on the front end before the construction project begins. That's the problem with the zoning aspect of that. And you can make requirements of what has to be done on the property under zoning to be able to meet those requirements. The, the advantage, at least on the stormwater board in this case, is once the project begins, and this would apply to any time there is more than one acre of land that is disturbed. That's the application under 31320 in the code. It would not apply to infill of single lots. That's the only concern I guess you've got in that regard. So areas that are smaller than an acre in size, it would not have an effect on. But anytime there is clear cutting or involvement on slopes with more, one acre or more, this would apply.
What's the limitation? I mean, why the limitation?
That's what we have currently in 31320 of our code about what constitutes land disturbing activity.
Our code?
Yes, our code.
Tennessee. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that in the other phases of, of this effort, we could always address that through an amendment process.
Yes.
Wanted to go smaller than one acre. I, I, I know the constituents over here would probably like to see smaller than one acre because what you do here. So thank you for those questions. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring Bill Payne in just to, I guess, on the administrative side, make sure that, and I've, I've talked to Jeremy Swayley and he feels like this does allow them to enforce being able to restrict or, or giving land disturbing permits to people that haven't paid. I, I guess my question is on that side, do they now come up with a policy that lines up with this ordinance? Because Phil, it's, it's my understanding that, that the administration or the land, well, the stormwater board would, or stormwater folks would get the ball rolling as far as telling a developer, you, you can't pull any more permits because you have outstanding fees.
Yes, sir. That'd be part of this as an ordinance in the law here in the city. Yes, sir.
I see Mr. Payne is with us now.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Bill. So would, would, would Stormwater Department now, I, I guess revise or, or come up with new policy based on this ordinance? To be able to withhold permits from developers that haven't paid their storm, their penalties?
Actually, we would, we would actually use, use the information that Mr. Swayley has already created. And Mr. Swayley and, and his team actually are already paid for by the Water Quality Program. And he already takes information directly to the Stormwater Regulations Board. And so the, the current, the current way that the code is set up and the way that, the way that, the way that our program is set up is that the Water Quality Program actually provides funding and positions directly to the Land Development Office for the enforcement of these codes and, and, and through the Site Development Manager, which is, which is a water quality funded position. That is, that is how they have access to be able to get to the board. Mr. Swayley, I, I believe has, has presented on this information to the board back last summer or possibly even earlier than that. And so it is something that he's been working on and has, has mentioned to the board and presented to them in the past about issues that he saw from within the Land Development Office.
Yeah.
Certainly to the extent that, that he's on board, that, that would, that, that is how we would, we would continue to support this effort as well.
Okay, I, I heard it. Here, here's bottom line. I want to make sure there's not a disconnect when it comes to issuing, in other words, when, when some, when a developer comes down to pull a land disturbance permit, they have not pulled or they have not paid perhaps a, a former fine. The land, the Land Development Office would tell them, you can't pull a permit because you have unpaid stormwater fees. Is that correct?
I would, I would like to ask that Mr. Swayley be brought in. That is my understanding of, of what he has proposed.
I, I want to make sure there's not a disconnect between what happens and this ordinance. I mean, this, this, this ordinance takes care really of, of, it creates an appeal process for anybody that's been told they can't pull a permit. That's what this ordinance does.
Certainly. And, and, and I think to the, to the extent that, that the provision in place, is in place, we would have, we would work directly with Jeremy and with Dallas Rucker in the Land Development Office to make sure that, that we, that we have it applied. There is an existing stormwater enforcement protocol that already exists and, and has been reviewed and approved by the board that basically applies, you know, different, different levels of, of civil penalties to different types of violations. And we could add this to that enforcement protocol.
Okay, that's what, so that's what I was asking. So this would be added to those, to that protocol? Basically, it's adding to the policy that you have. That was, that was the crux of my question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Burns, is that an old one or new?
It's a new one, sir.
Okay, let's go back to you.
Would you consider, I'm, I'm someplace else. I'm considering a prototype. So would you consider making it smaller than an acre?
We would need to at least make a change to 31320. And I'm, I'm not sure if Mr. Payne is aware that this TDEC adopt that one acre requirement statewide. Why is there a one acre requirement here in our code for land disturbing activity?
One acre is the, is the minimum, is the, is, is the smallest size or it's, it, it, I'm, I'm trying to say it correctly. One acre is, is the threshold established by the Clean Water Act, by the Federal Clean Water Act for where municipalities must regulate. There's not any provision to my knowledge that prevents us from going smaller than an acre. And that is a local decision, but the, the state, the state requires that we have a program in place for land disturbing permit activities for one acre or larger, or if they are part of a larger plan of common development. So as Mr. Noblet mentioned earlier about infill lots, a small infill lot would be exempt. But someone doing, doing on just a single family home as part of a, of a, of a larger subdivision, that, that one that's part of a larger subdivision would still be considered a land disturbing activity and would still require a permit because it's part of that larger plan.
So I would like us to consider, please, going smaller. Because a lot of the activity that's happening now is smaller infill. And I think that it, it can't hurt us to go smaller. I'm looking for us to erase exemptions that people kind of get by with.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I would, I would agree with that and for, for the reason, so I would ask Mr. Noblet to research and see if there's anything in state law that would prevent us from going smaller. But as I've said before, a person can go get one permit at a time, subdivide their land to less than an acre on lots and go one at a time if they wanted to. And that probably, if they really were out to be a bad actor, they could get around things like that. And I, I, I'm actually thinking of a developer who probably would do that if they had a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just to, just to add to that conversation, just, I, I, I wanted to make sure that the, the one acre threshold is set based on, based on the Federal Clean Water Act. They're current, currently, we already regulate down to a thousand square feet of disturbance. And so there are varying levels. And so I think that would be, that's what we would have to look at is what are those levels? When are they triggered and why are they triggered? And which ones of those levels may be the correct one to apply in this particular situation. But there are, there are some different levels that we already apply. Those were applied by the council several years ago as, as part of some, some earlier changes that were made because we were having similar types of issues. So I think we could apply that, one of these, one of these other levels. I think there's a 1,000 square foot and a 5,000 square foot of disturbed area. So there are two different pieces. One is, is the size of the property. One is, is the size of the disturbed area. And that's, that's what we would, that's what we could look at with Mr. Noblet.
Okay, that would be great if, if you would do that. And I guess another, another question would be, Mr. Noblet, is, is this the right document to address that in? And, and, and then the second question would be Chairman Henderson, would you consider that a friendly amendment to this if it was, if it was considered the right place to put it?
Well, I, I think one of the questions came to Mr. Attorney. My, my question before we get ahead of ourselves, if we're going to go smaller than an acre and Bill or, or Phil, you might be able to answer this, does that not have to come through the Stormwater Board? Much like if, if we're doing a zoning change or, or, or planning change comes through the Planning Commission? I, I think that would have to come through or as a recommendation from the Stormwater Board, wouldn't it?
Definitely you can request that. It is not a state law requirement to take all stormwater regulations through the Stormwater Board, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Their zoning regulations are required by state statute to do that.
Okay, okay. So, so we wouldn't necessarily have to take it through Stormwater Board?
It's always good to get their recommendation because they're dealing with it on, on a constant basis. I'd really think that would be wise and to at least talk with the board about what you're proposing in here.
Yeah, I, I, so I, you know, Mr. Chair, I think I, I'd like to go ahead and see this ordinance move forward and then propose that to the Stormwater Board. Let it, let it sort of run through the Stormwater Board and then come back as a recommendation so that, so that we're not just sort of acting in a vacuum. I mean, that's what I would prefer to see, I think.
Well, and, and, and I think the thinking is very sound because I just made the comment and we're co-sponsors that we're gonna, we're gonna get them involved early and often. So I think that's a great way to start the, the, I'm going to say partnership for lack of a better term, but that, that, that's a, I think that's a, a great suggestion. Councilperson Burns, would you be okay handling it that way?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I, I just want us to keep in mind that a lot of the problems that are happening are happening on these small infills as well because we're running out of land. Or people are splitting up and, and trying to get around the law. So since we can do it, I'd like us to seriously consider doing it or having it in our toolbox at least. I'm good with whatever, just so we don't, don't lose sight of it.
And, and that change would be to 31320 in your current ordinance here. Because that's where the one acre or more total land area being disturbed is referenced in your stormwater.
Correct. Or you could just change it to comply with what Bill was talking about. So the two ordinance say the same and it's not a very big change since it's already on the books at, at another place.
Okay. Phil, you and I can also talk as well a, a little bit more about where these, the, because there are some other tiers regarding the permitting that we can, we can talk about as well. Part of that section in 320 is, is also referencing the fact that, that there is a, there is also a state permit required when that threshold exceeds one acre. And, and we can certainly, we can certainly talk offline to find the right section where these other, these other regulated tiers are referenced in the code.
Okay, no problem.
That sounds great. Any other questions? I'm, 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 I have a question. I would like to move something, but I, I, I think I've been thrown into the chair's position. So unless I take a special privilege, I don't think I can do that. But what I'd like to see happen is we get it on the agenda, you know, two weeks out and have a first vote in two weeks. Councilperson Henderson?
Well, that's what I was going to suggest. And normally when we take it through a committee, the chair will ask, are we ready to place it on the two week agenda? And if everybody's ready for it to be placed on the two week agenda and there's no, yeah, there's nobody in opposition to that, then we'll, we'll, we'll have it placed on the two week agenda. So I, I guess you just asked a question, are we ready to place it on the two week agenda?
That, that would be the agenda of the 23rd of March, I believe. And I guess we also have time, even if we decided as a council to do that, to, if some things came up, we, we could deal with it. And there will be a committee meeting that day on the 23rd if some unexpected things come up that we could deal with. As, as, as the council knows, we also could defer a week or something like that if something else came up. But if the council's ready for that, I'm more than ready.
I'm ready, sir.
I'm ready.
Good.
All right then. Okay, back to you, Mr. Chair. For a minute.
For, 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 yeah, just for one second, because I'm going to throw it back to you. If everybody's good with that, I think we are ready to go on now to the vegetation ordinance and, and to look at placing this ordinance in stormwater as well. So Mr. Councilman Mitchell, I'm going to turn the floor back over to you, sir.
Well done. First, I've got to say, thank you very, very much to Councilman Ledford for all the work he has done on this as well as the stormwater. I guess it goes under the no good deed goes unpunished category. But you've done a heck of a job, Councilman Ledford, and to get us to this point. And we've had, we've had, had comments from home builders. We've had comments from the LDO. We've had comments from RPA. I, I perceive something. I'm assuming it went to the whole council from well, actually a constituent of District Two that's, that liked the, the group that got together and, and put together some assessments and things like that. And I believe he made a comment that they'd like another crack at recommendations to, to move forward. I just wanted to say that, not suggesting we do that. I'm, I'm just wanting to sort of set the record of where we've come from. But having said that, Councilman Ledford, do you have anything you want to start us off with in the conversation?
Sure, I appreciate the compliment.
Back of my screen here. There he goes.
There you go. So where I have been talking with Phil is taking the recommendations from staff. And there were quite a few, if you saw my last email to council, there were quite a few of agreements with staff moving forward and incorporating those agreements into and matching up to the ordinance. I think it's very important. I think there were a lot of, if you saw that document, I made it easy to read with green check marks. And Phil and I have been working through that. I know he's working on that to align with, with staff comments, which I appreciate very much. I would say in reference to your constituent in District Two, at one point was on board with this quite heavily and somehow has done a 180 on us. So I would suggest that, and, and that particular legislation, Councilman Mitchell, was suggested for comments from that individual. And the response I got back was I'm not qualified to answer these or to chime in. So I'm guessing with the, the group that he has, they want to create their own legislation and come forward with some ideas, present to council. I think that's great, but this has been out there for almost a year or more, and I have not received officially any input from these said individuals. So I think that staff has recommended their changes, their input. We've matched that up. And I would like to see that kind of crafted into a final piece and, and moved forward. Because I think if we wait for that input, it will ultimately change the intent of what the vegetation component was originally designed to do. It was not designed to be the magic pill to solve all of the woes, which I heard in the, in, in the statement very loudly. And if that group would like to get together and craft their own ordinance, I think that we would be glad to look at that in the future. But I think it would hold us back tremendously from the point we have gotten to this, to where we are today.
All right, thank you. Any more comments? Councilperson Burns?
Yeah, I think Councilman Ledford has done a fabulous job on this, worked really, really hard. And I think it's time for us to move forward on it. Councilman Ledford, is it ready to go once all the various suggestions are the pieces? If so, then I think we ought to go ahead and get it ready to put on agenda. You've done a great job.
Well, thank you. Yes, ma'am. I think Phil and I need to probably sit down this week if possible and get it ready with the matchup to the comments from staff that we, that we gave a nod to in the, what I shared with all of the council and get that incorporated into the ordinance that matches up, Phil. And then I think we're ready for something that we can move forward. Is anything going to be perfect? No. Can we look at it later? We've heard this, this other legislation, which I fully support, will probably have amendments. This might have some amendments as we move down the road. And, but I think, I think holding back at this point is a big mistake.
Well, I'd like one last question if I may, and that is, when are you looking to put it on the agenda?
That would be, let me throw that question over to Phil. Phil, given the green checkboxes and, and then the, the email that I sent, I think last week, when do you think we could maybe marry those two together and, and, and have the, those incorporated into the piece?
I can have that done within the next week. No problem. Remember, this is a provision that is a zoning ordinance amendment, though it will require to have some type of recommendation from RPC. So just be aware of that.
Let's work, yeah, let's work to get that final document paired up.
Sure, I can do that.
Let's, let's try to shoot for Friday. If we can, then you and I can talk over the next couple of days.
Sure, no problem.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
A, a couple of questions. One, and Phil just alluded to that, that this would have to go through RPC because it's found in our zoning. Is this not a document that could live in stormwater?
Stormwater. I thought we discussed that. And I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
Bill, any thoughts?
Yes, sir. There's, there's places we could put it in our stormwater requirements here specifically, you know, in a, a, a section of the code. I'm trying to make sure my paragraphs are right here. Let's see. The, the sections regarding land disturbing activity, we could, we could put it in after that here in the code under stormwater. The, the only aspect of that is that you're, you're giving a whole lot to your stormwater board to, to deal with each time. But, you know, that clearly could be done. Yes.
Well, what my, my thinking on this is the Stormwater Board seems to have more teeth and stiffer penalties for not abiding by the ordinance, whereas and stiffer penalties for not abiding by the ordinance. Whereas if this, if this lives in zoning, they go to city court and they pay a fifty dollar fine and they pay it and they go on about their business.
Yes.
These, these can carry stiffer civil, civil penalties. Uh, plus the fact this is, this is sort of post-construction. And we start, we start to lose the handle on post-construction when it lives in zoning.
Yes.
And, and I think if we can place this in the stormwater ordinance, I think we would all be better served. I, I guess my next question, and this might be to Councilman Ledford. Um, there, so you've got some boxes, uh, and with green checks by them, uh, up in the comments section, some inconsistencies when it refers to the percentage of slope. Obviously, the, as it's written, the, the slope is thirty five percent. I think as it's currently written, uh, I think staff is noting that there's some inconsistency and and I think they feel like at least thirty three percent should be the number, I guess, to, um,
Where the trigger lies.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
To, I, I think to, to remain more consistent with everything throughout, uh, throughout the city. So is that something that we need to?
If you read my, yes, sir. If you read my notes, I can code totally concurred with thirty three percent.
Okay, okay. I did, uh, somehow missed your notes.
There, the answers are in red and it, I think it says specifically there, if thirty three is where it needs to be, then I say we move it to thirty three.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right. So I, I got you now.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell.
And I can prepare a, a draft for you in both sections and, and y'all to tell me where you want to go. Uh, whether it be a, a zoning amendment or a stormwater amendment, and I'll, uh, prepare a version for both sections.
Let me, let, let me add a question. Um, we have a Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting on the twenty third. Is that going too long before we have a discussion about, uh, uh, about this ordinance? Uh, or, or should we, I, I know that you've got a target of, of matching it up by Friday. And certainly we could have it circulated. Um, but, uh, what, what, what's the pleasure of the council as far as trying to move it forward?
I, I'd like to see it sooner than later, Chairman, to borrow a phrase from you.
I'd like to see it sooner than later.
Uh, there's no reason why we couldn't have a Public Works and Transportation special call on the sixteenth. I mean,
I agree with my colleagues.
Wow, you're trying to make me work a little bit before I get out of here.
Good for you.
Okay, okay. I agree. It is good for me. Um, all, all right then, well, well, let's, let's call a special committee, uh, Public Works Transportation Committee for the sixteenth next week.
All right.
Any other questions or, or, or any other suggestions or comments about some other possible changes in what we've seen so far while you know, Phil's, Phil and, uh, Councilman Ledford are working on it?
Councilman Mitchell, I'm, oh, I'm, damn, go ahead.
Councilman Gilbert.
I was gonna ask, did we cover everything that Mr. Cannon, or his, uh, the other guy Swilly, is that his name right?
Yeah, Jeremy.
Did we cover, did we cover everything of their wish list? That we tried to, uh, help them enforce to do their job better?
I, I believe this helps them at least on the aspect and your, your concern previously on here, Councilman Gilbert, about, uh, being able to, uh, hold up on a permit as long as an administrative body makes that decision. My concern was having just, uh, one individual make that decision in city government without necessarily having any, uh, a prospect of appeal. I believe this provides due process to them by having an opportunity to be heard in front of a, a group and a court action if they disagree with the ruling by that group. And that's a lot better than just having one person make a decision.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson.
Uh, so I'd respond to Councilman Gilbert's, uh, question briefly. Uh, uh, Mr. Swely had, uh, a, a, a pretty good list, a pretty exhaustive list. I think this was sort of the low hanging fruit that we thought we could sort of do immediately. I think some of the other things that we'd need to continue to look at and address as we go along. But, but this was something that we could, we felt like we could sort of do immediately and, and, and take effect sooner rather than later. Uh, my next question would be to our Chair of, of Public Works. Uh, I know as Chair, you're supposed to facilitate the meeting, but I'm going to ask you, sir, is there any questions about our vegetation ordinance? Or, or anything that you would like to see changed or different in the ordinance?
Thank you. Um, thirty three might be a little bit high for me. I was standing on some ground that's being developed, um, uh, just the other day. And thirty three steep. I mean, it is really steep. Um, how low I want to go, I, 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 I don't want to be overburdened some, but, but that thirty, thirty three might be a little high for me, but I was thinking that, you know, that could be, um, uh, talked out in committee and see where it goes.
Okay.
Well, if we do that, then we're out of step with what we just said, bringing it to thirty three with the current code. So how does that? How does that fall into play?
I'm, I'm, I've never been out of step in my life, so I guess I couldn't do that.
I'd, just a good, it's a good question. We went from thirty five to thirty three to get in line. Now we're talking about going out, outside of that, so.
I will, you know what? If it gets something done, I will, I will yield to, to, to that comment.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. I think those two discussions went smashingly well.
Good teamwork.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm back to you again.
Thank you, sir. Uh, excellent job of leading those two discussions, and I do think we've made some progress this afternoon. Good to see. We now move to other business and we do, um, in fact, uh, where's I? Madam Clerk, you can let her, yes, go. There we go. He's gone. And if you would, let's bring in Chief Hyman for our next order of business. I think that's who may have just, yeah. Bring in Chief Hyman. And he needs to give us a report on, um, some surplus radios that we no longer need.
Don't see Chief Hyman.
He's got his hand raised. He's at the very top of the list now. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. How are y'all?
We're good. You, uh, you've got some radios that we're going to get rid of?
Yes, this is a surplus equipment that the radio shop, shop, uh, Pat Rollins brought forward to us. Um, it's twenty year old, uh, adequate equipment. Um, and instead of us just, uh, surplusing it and it going to a landfill or, um, uh, Memphis, uh, the city of Memphis can actually use some of this equipment because they still use some of that technology. So we just wanted it to go to use and just make you all aware of what we were doing with that donation.
Okay, do we have any questions for the chief, uh, about these radios? Phil, does that meet the requirement of, uh, surplus in these radios?
Yes, sir. You have the, the power and, and to approve, and the mayor has the power to approve just a, a private disposition of property in connection with things. That's one reason we were wanting to at least make sure that we provided it to the council in connection with this, where it appears to be advantageous to the city or where the property is of a specialized nature of to not be of general marketability, then it's appropriate to do this. And that's why we wanted to bring it before you at this time.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to take a vote on it or anything, do we?
No, sir. As long, if anyone has an objection to it, let us know. And, uh, Chief, do you have any valuation of what this, uh, property is worth?
Uh, I had asked what the worth of it is, and because it is twenty year, uh, adequate equipment, the value is zero. Um, so that's one reason why we wanted somebody to get some use out of it because there is no value to it. So, um, and it obviously, uh, needed to go to somebody that could use it.
Yes, sir. And the folks in Memphis still have this type of technology that works with them. Is that correct?
That is correct, unfortunately.
Okay, sir.
For Memphis.
Yes.
All right, I am seeing no hands at this time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Nicole, you can excuse our guest. Uh, next order of business is our, uh, pending presentations and education session. Uh, Councilwoman Coonrod, looks like we have a YFD committee on the thirtieth concerning our Office of Family Empowerment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we're all, we're lined up, uh, got everybody lined up to go on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, and I guess if the council has any specific questions uh, that they would like to ask, if you would send them to Councilwoman Coonrod between now and the thirtieth, I'm sure we, uh, sure that would be greatly appreciated. Pending legislative matters, LDO enforcement tools protocols, Councilman Oglesby. You're, you're muted, sir. You're still muted.
Had it in another string. We're working on, I should have some more information next week about that.
Okay, uh, and when you say.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, you say next week, we will not have strategic planning next week is, um, is, is it something you, you're going to email the council?
Yeah, yeah, I can email and then we can have further discussion at our next, uh, strategic planning meeting. Yes, sir.
Which would be on the twenty third then.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, Nicole, if you would put that on for the twenty third, please, make sure that gets back on, uh, our agenda.
Yes.
Sure.
All right, uh, Council, you will look over your board appointments there. I think, uh, if you'll look down to group nomination process, uh, we still have two seats that need to be filled on the Health, Education and Housing Facility. And that is Groups, um, four, five and six, seven, eight and nine, I believe. And then, uh, the same with the Industrial Development Board. Now, Mr. Attorney, it's my understanding that the, uh, IDB Board did vote to go to nine member boards. Is that correct?
Uh, both boards have now voted to go to nine member boards. Uh, that was approved at the, uh, uh, Health and Ed Board Meeting and the Industrial Development Board Meeting. We have sent, are in the process of sending that information off to the Secretary of State for their approval of the charter. Once that's accomplished, it'll be just a member for each district on that body.
And when, when do we expect to hear back from the Attorney General?
Well, clearly, within the next two weeks, we should be fine.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Birds?
Uh, sir, four, five and six do have a nomination for the Health and Education Board. Um, our na, our nomination is Charlie Patey and we'll be circulating the, his resume.
Okay, when would you like for that to be placed on the agenda for a vote?
Well, do you, does it have to be a strategic planning or we could, we're going to go ahead and circulate the resume?
Well, it needs to be under other business. It needs to be on our six o'clock agenda, so.
Yes.
Let's do it next week.
Next week, okay.
Yeah, we, we, that's our nomination and we're going to go ahead and circulate the resume.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you would, uh, make sure that gets on our, uh, agenda under other business for next week, please.
Yes, I will.
And Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, um, we will cover, uh, the agendas for this week and next week at our, uh, three thirty agenda meeting. Uh, there is one, uh, item of business I want to bring before the council. Uh, bring to your attention, Councilwoman Birds, is that a?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Um, a, as many of you know, we're, we have some council members that will be leaving us um, uh, come April, um, I guess that would be April the thirteenth would be the, uh, last meeting of this current, um, council. Uh, one will be leaving us, the last meeting will be on April the sixth. I would, uh, as the Chair, like to see us return back to chambers for the month of April. Uh, Mr. Attorney, it's my understanding that the, uh, Governor is not going to renew our, uh, uh, executive order allowing electronic meetings after, uh, April, April thirtieth. So, um, I mean, I think given that situation along with uh, I've talked to several that would like to have their last meeting, uh, be back into chambers. Uh, I think we need to start making preparations, uh, Madam Clerk and Mr. Attorney, uh, as well as notifying the, uh, administration that we will return back to chambers on April the sixth. Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, is there a possibility, uh, obviously tremendous progress being made with vaccines and things like that, but is there a possibility of doing some, um, type of Zoom in chambers, um, combination where if people want to speak, they don't have to feel like they're exposing themselves in the council chambers. I, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with myself returning to the council chambers. I just, uh, would wonder, can we do a hybrid of some type where at the end of the meeting, um, people, if they want to speak, could do that via Zoom or it, I, I don't, technically, I don't know if that's even possible, but I'm just asking the question.
So, early on, we did talk to the IT department and we talked about doing a hybrid, um, uh, back several months ago. I think that is a possibility. However, I don't think that I would want to do a hybrid really, uh, past April the thirtieth, when the executive order runs out. And it may give the administration, uh, some department heads, uh, a level of comfort if we continue to do sort of a hybrid. So I will, I will, um, contact IT and see what progress we made on being able to do a hybrid meeting. And maybe we could, uh, maybe we could do a hybrid through at least maybe, uh, the thirtieth of April. When the executive orders, uh, do run out.
It actually expires on the twenty eighth.
On the twenty eighth?
Yes, April twenty eighth.
April twenty eighth, okay. All right, any questions about returning to the chambers on the sixth? Now, I have gone and looked at the chambers. We do have, uh, Plexiglas dividers. Uh, our seats are, uh, socially distanced, spaced out. Uh, everything's ready to go for us to, uh, go in. We can wear a mask into the, uh, into the chambers and then, uh, I guess, once we get situated and we can take them off to have a meeting. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I feel pretty good about returning to the chamber since our numbers are going down. Um, but is it possible that we could add a roast to that meeting since I, of, of Russell Gilbert and Erskine? I feel like, you know, we need to go ahead and, uh, get them good on that last day.
I would totally agree on Councilman Gilbert and Oglesby. Let's roast them hard.
Please, please don't leave my friends, Gary.
No, we can say what we want to say any kind of way, so don't, don't forget that.
No, and, and good fun wise, nothing mean.
I'm sure that we will have an opportunity at the end of that meeting to, uh, to give our congratulations and well wishes to all of our council people and how you would like to proceed with that, uh, just, I caution, just proceed at your own risk.
Never been to a roast that was nice. That's all I can say.
Well, what you meant, that ended, that ended well, correct?
Yes, that, there you go, Chairman, that ended well.
That ended well.
Go right, I know where you live.
I know, I know, but I just say, uh, firsthand, like it's, I can't think of nothing really bad to say about neither one of you guys. And just your resume, Erskine alone says enough about you to, well, you know, even if you're not serving on council, I already see and expect you're going to continue to do great things.
All right, save it for the roast.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's, 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 let's address that at the proper time.
This isn't the roast I was thinking of.
Yes. I love y'all.
Okay, every, everything else on our agenda this afternoon, uh, will be covered, uh, at our three thirty hour. So is there anything that's not on our agenda here that we need to cover before we, um, I think, Mr. Attorney, uh, did you need an attorney-client privilege after this meeting? Is that correct?
Whi- whichever you wish. If it's now, it's probably a good time.
Well, I thi, I think now would probably be better. Everybody's here. Nicole, are you able to end this meeting and restart? Well, I thi, I think now would probably be better. Everybody's here. Nicole, are you able to end this meeting and restart an attorney-client? You're, you're muted. You're muted.
I don't think I can restart. I think the Vice Chairman is listening and I'll, I'll text him to let him know this. Start.
Okay, okay. All right, Council, I don't think we have anything else on our agenda that we need to cover this afternoon. So we will, at this time, end our strategic planning and we will resume shortly with an attorney-client privilege meeting. See, see everybody back in just, just shortly.
All right.